What? Seriously. Well, what does that make me then? She feels old. I'm like, so what does that make me then? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Reynoldsburg City Council meeting of April 25th, 2022, to order. The time is now 6:31. I'm Council President Angie Jenkins and would like to welcome everyone to the Reynoldsburg City Council chambers. At this time, we'll have the invocation. Please stand. The invocation will be given by Pastor Lamont Glover. Following the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Behold how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. Father, we thank you for the mayor. We thank you for the council. We thank you for all the city officials here. Father, be in the midst of this meeting. Give them divine wisdom, divine insight, divine strategy, divine ideas to continue to help to make this community strive and thrive and move forward. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Strickland.
Present.
Councilmember Savadi.
Here.
Councilmember Pecaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Cottner.
Here.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Approval of the agenda. We will be removing, under motions, Item A, and the executive session for this evening has been canceled. Are there any other corrections or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda stands approved. Next, we have the approval of minutes. Approval of City Council regular meeting minutes of April 11th, 2022. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved as submitted. Next, we have community comments. The community comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for citizens to address council with comments about legislation on the agenda or just general concerns. Before addressing City Council, members of the public are asked to complete a speaker's form and give it to the clerk. The council president will invite speakers to step to the microphone, give their name and address. All remarks should be addressed to council as a whole and not exceed three minutes. Are there any comments from the public?
Yes, Madam President. Ms. Rosalynn Duveau Spitzley. And everyone, please speak into the microphone so our listening and viewing audience can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I live in Reynoldsburg at 7634 Ridgemont Court, and I've been there a few years. And I have a landlord that is somewhat there. And when you address problems to him about what's going on in the building, he gets very belligerent and very nasty at me because I have a disability. That has also been reported to the EEOC. The last couple of weeks, we have been noticing around the complex an infestation of rats and mice. There's been dead rats on the sidewalk. There's been two sets of mice that have entered my house. I live on the backside of the complex. It's closest to the Catholic Church, which is St. Pius. And I brought this concern up to David. And so Saturday, he came out to take a look. And he said, oh, well, there's a tiny little hole in a pipe that goes into the house. And I said, David, that's not where they're coming in. They're coming in at the back of the complex because there's a river, and I don't know if it's got a name or not, that goes on, it's like a knoll, and it goes down into a river. It's sometimes got a lot of water in it, sometimes none. But when rain, ice, snow, whatever comes down, those trees fall because they're old. Sometimes the branches are fairly thick and good size, and they fall across onto the Ridge's apartment's property. So David goes out and cuts them, but instead of hauling them to the garbage, he just throws them back, exacerbating the situation with the rats and mice. I called and I talked to the clerk this week. She's aware of it. And I said, we need to do something about it. So I was told that the complex is not owned by Mr. Bornhost, but is owned by somebody in New Jersey that's an absentee landlord, I guess is the way to apprise it. And I was told that they would issue an order to ask them to come out and take a look at it and get it cleaned up because it's not me that's just complaining. All over Reynoldsburg, I'm hearing that we're having rats and mice in complexes, and nobody's doing anything about it. And this isn't just in my vicinity. This is all over the city of Reynoldsburg. And I'm not the only one that's complained about it because on the other side is a river that you can't really see through is another complex. And I've talked to people back there that said they are going through the same situation. So I did have the fire marshal come out because that forest is about 40 feet from my back door. And if that were to catch on fire, none of us at the back and maybe on the other side would get out. We would all be dead and buried. And I think that's something that needs to be very seriously taken by council. The rats and the mice need to be dealt with. I understand that you cannot put mice or rat stuff out because there is deer that go through there. There's cats and dogs. Nobody wants to harm those animals, but we're kind of at our wits' end that we don't know what to do. I talked to the gentleman at the fire marshal's office. I went down here today to Main Street, and I spoke with them about the fire hazard. They came out and took a look at it, but I won't have the report probably until Wednesday. So I'm asking council to be proactive in this situation and get this resolved. There's people out there that are from other countries that don't speak a stitch of English. If there was a fire, they couldn't understand directions of where to go and what to do because they don't have the language skills. We've got small children, a lot of them, that live in that complex that also are just learning English. You know, and if the rat gets into the house, they could end up getting rabies, and then there's a serious, serious problem. So I'd like to have the council member address me and tell me what can be done on both these issues.
Yes, Councilmember Bryant.
Which complex are you?
It's called The Ridge. It's right next door to the St. Pius Catholic Church off the Wagner.
Yeah. You may want to consider putting your rent in escrow, you and your neighbors.
Well, he's, David Bornhost is a very threatening man. He and his father own it. It's a family-owned business. And when I tell him about this, he takes out his claws and basically threatens me that if I do any such thing, he'll have me evicted, which then that's retaliatory and you can't do it. But at the same token, you know, I have a disability. It makes it really tough for me to go through a court system. He uses my disability against me to threaten me.
Why don't you give a call tomorrow to the Legal Aid Society of Columbus?
I've already talked to them about it. They don't do anything like this unless I end up in an eviction.
Okay.
So that's why I'm here at City Council. I think council kind of has a duty and an obligation to make sure that the city doesn't become rat-infested, mice-infected, that people are bitten or harmed, that these apartment complexes don't get away with murder, which is what they're doing. These apartments in the city of Reynoldsburg need to have a watchdog after them. Because when I moved in there, things weren't great, but I had limited income because of my disability. But nobody should have to live in this set of circumstance. And if that's the way the city of Reynoldsburg runs itself, Mr. Mayor, I will be going to Channel Four and calling the investigative reporters because this ends tonight. I'm going to get a copy of that fire marshal's report, find out what they have to say. I'm going to continue my search, you know, for answers. I think I have a problem with lead in the water in those apartments. They're very old. My ceilings have caved in three different times, in the kitchen and in the laundry room. And then about two weeks after that, they caved in again practically in the same spot. And David will go in and mud them back up, but he leaves the ceiling open for three or four months because he's busy. Upstairs, I had a flood about 2:00 in the morning. I didn't know it because I was asleep. And the water came rolling down from underneath the kitchen, or underneath the bathroom cabinets. And it was like no big deal. And I said, David, it is December. I am not going to put up with this. I'm going over to a hotel because it's freezing. You have to turn everything off, and you're going to pay the cost of the hotel, which he did, no problem with that. But it's still an issue that, you know, these pipes, he doesn't clean the eaves trough. So up in the back, one of the back bedrooms, I'm starting to see buckling along where the eaves trough line goes through. And I've been in the building a very long time because my parents rented property, and I learned from a little take about the issues that go on in homes and the destruction that that stuff causes. In the winter, we have icicles that are hanging down by truckloads off of those eaves troughs. Now, one ceiling in the complex.
Ms. Duveau Spitzley, I'm sorry, but your three minutes have expired. What we can do, this is normally just a comments section. You've left your name and number. We can have someone from the city call you.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Perhaps might be the mayor tomorrow. Thank you. Mr. Sarek?
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thanks for this opportunity. I got word that there was going to be discussion about the fireworks at this meeting. Is that correct? All right. So I have.
Mr. Sarek, what's your address, please?
I'm sorry. I'm at 8322 Bedlington Drive here in Reynoldsburg. So I've had a concern for many years over the fireworks in our neighborhood, in our city, and now with our new state law that was signed by the governor, there's the continued concern. So I had downloaded some frequently asked questions from the fire marshals. And so I just made a couple of points that I like to address of concerns for myself and I know from some of my neighbors. The first thing that was listed on the fire marshal's notes about our new law is that fireworks must be discharged responsibly. Well, human behavior makes the term responsibly questionable, as many ER doctors can attest to. Number two, only consumer-grade fireworks can be set off. Do people even know what consumer grade is? Also, let's be honest, some of the things set off in the neighborhoods should be referred to as explosives and not fireworks. When explosive rattles windows, what does that signal, consumer or commercial grade? Fireworks cannot be under the influence, the people using them cannot be under the influence of intoxicating liquor, beer, or controlled substances. These are times of the holidays that allow the fireworks, and often celebrations include mind-altering substances. Number four, fireworks must be discharged on a person's property or another property with permission. While often they are set off in the streets or the cul-de-sacs, or otherwise they would be too close to the owner's home. Also, while a firework is set off on a person's property, it doesn't always stay there. Well, in fact, it never stays there. We have found projectile remnants in our own backyard. Our neighbors had their cars and patios covered in firework debris. Number five, time when fireworks are not allowed is from 11:00 p.m. or 12:00 p.m. or 1:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. I assume then that all Ohioans can set off fireworks all day long on the designated holidays and sometimes on previous or post-holidays, depending on when the holiday falls. There's two or three days of margin there. How can this possibly be monitored by our law enforcement or council members and enforced by our safety agencies in Reynoldsburg? If private fireworks are allowed all day, who is safe walking their neighborhood sidewalks with the possibility of projectiles flying at them? And I've seen this happen at night, but if they're being set off during the day and I'm walking around, you know, I get a low concern. I say if a firework by the public cannot, cannot, or will not be monitored and enforced, then it should not be allowed. Our city has the right by law to not allow private individual firework use. Our city has a fantastic fireworks display every year. This is done responsibly, professionally, and legally. Number six, concern for human and animal welfare. For some, this issue is a public health issue. Those suffering from PTSD and animals who are negatively affected is real, and it's serious. Annually, Reynoldsburg citizens literally dread holidays instead of looking forward to them for enjoyment. Let's find ways to celebrate without neighborhood agitation and ongoing explosives and projectiles compromising our health and safety. Thank you for this time to speak.
Thank you.
Madam President, I have two emails from residents to read. The first one is from Kenneth Calwewski. Sorry, Mr. Kenneth. On April 25th, you will be voting on approving funding for speed humps for the Quarry Park Development. I have a previously scheduled appointment and will not be able to attend the meeting. I serve on Reynoldsburg's Traffic and Transportation Commission, as well as having more than 30 years of experience in the transportation engineering field. Let me caveat this letter by saying that the new views expressed here are solely my own and do not necessarily reflect those of EMHNT, your city engineering consultant and my employer. Since the location of the speed humps do not impact me personally, I have no dog in the fight, as they say. However, I would like for the city to avoid unnecessary and frivolous spending when the funds can be put to better use. Traffic studies were, excuse me. Traffic studies were performed within the Quarry Park Development over a period of five, six weeks. I've attached this data for your review. The results show the average speed of vehicles during the test period was 26 to 27 miles per hour. Priestley Drive is posted at 25 miles per hour, so that is quite reasonable. There would only have been 1% to 3% of enforceable violations. The street is not a drag race, as some people say. The speeding problem is perceived. The request for speed humps is based on a strawman argument that is intended to fix a problem that does not exist. Getting the right, getting right to the point, according to the petition signed by some residents, there is only a 48% buy-in, meaning that slightly more than half of the residents are opposed to the addition of speed humps. The number of proposed humps have already been reduced from the original plan after some residents reevaluated their position after being informed that the humps would be located near their own home. The reason that this is important is that eventually, based on past experiences, most residents are likely to request that the humps be removed. The arguments for or against the effectiveness of speed humps do not matter. The simple fact is that they were previously installed in five locations within the city and then removed later at the request of the residents. One such location was on Kingsley Drive, just one street over from the proposed location of the humps. That sets a fairly clear precedent. Approving funding for this project will ultimately not be limited to $36,000 being requested at this time. History demonstrates that the city is, in effect, committing itself to the future cost of removing the humps and repairing the pavement at some point in the future. Feel free to contact me if you have any questions or require further information. The next one is from Chris Mabry. I will not be able to attend the meeting, City Council meeting, but I wanted to voice my support for speed bumps being installed in the Quarry Park neighborhood. I am a three-year resident of Reynoldsburg. We first moved to Quarry Park Drive because of the lovely houses and how friendly the neighborhood seemed. We had never considered Reynoldsburg when started looking for a house, but after finding nothing in our go-to cities, we told our agent to look here. Little did we know that what a great city Reynoldsburg was. We have been nothing but glad that we made the decision to move here. This has been a wonderful city to live in. However, there has been one nagging problem with our neighborhood, speeding. Our street is not a very long street, only about 20 houses, but you would think it was NHRA drag race every hour of every day. As I stated, the street is not very long, so there is not a lot of, there is a lot of unnecessary acceleration and speeding. It's a chronic problem. I and my neighbors have contacted police on numerous occasions. I even joined the local HOA board to see if I could get the problem solved. Since the pandemic started, I've been working from home and have had a front row seat to the speeding on my street. So far, I have had many panic attacks as I watched children playing in the street just barely being missed by a speeder who slams on their brakes just to make the turn onto Sandrock. Just last month, I watched a Reynoldsburg City School bus speed going at least 35 to 40 miles per hour. Could go where? Marble Park. I know that on at least two occasions, a speed monitor has been placed on Priestley Drive in an effort to slow traffic speed. This has been somewhat effective, but the results have been temporary. When the speed monitor is removed, high acceleration and speeding resumes. A monitor has not been placed on Quarry Park Drive that I know of. I worked with other HOA board members to petition the City Council to consider installing speed bumps or speed tables. On the streets that I canvassed, we had overwhelming support and received more than 50%, 50% of signatures for homes on those streets except for Marble Park. I canvassed all streets but Priestley and Windruff. This was the easiest sell I've ever had to do. I would walk up to the home, explain what we were doing, and as soon as I said speed bump, they were all like, where do I sign? Nobody wants their child to be the first one hurt or killed in this neighborhood. I, like many here, feared it is just a matter of time before there is a tragic accident. During the time we've lived in our home, I've watched many cars speed past the Priestley and Quarry Park intersection. I've watched a motorcycle wreck and slide as it tried to turn from Sandrock onto Quarry Park Drive, and I've watched a toy ball roll out into the street while a six-year-old child chased it, just as a car was passing the house. I know some would like to say that speed bumps lower house values, look ugly, or a pain for emergency vehicles. But what is worse, a fire truck that takes 20 seconds longer to respond or an unnecessary accident where someone loses a loved one? It is my hope that City Council will approve speed bumps for Quarry Park neighborhood as the residents have stated they want and need.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from council? Do we have any comments from Mayor Begany?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This evening, I did want to let you know that the city attorney, Shook, is unable to be here, so I will also be helping facilitate the conversation about some of the legislation this evening. Also, Director Dorman unfortunately had to leave town due to a funeral, so I will also be the lead in the service department. So I did want to provide a couple of updates. Perhaps on social media, you happen to see some conversations about the construction condition on Main Street. I did want to provide an update to you about where we're at and, most importantly, where we're going. First of all, the process did start in 2019 with an OPWC grant that was ultimately passed by the previous council as well as this current council. The planning and engineering work, talking to property owners, showing highlights, pictures, designs about what was going to go in in all of these locations began in 2020. In 2021, continuing to work with property owners, there was some pre-site work going on. And due to circumstances beyond the control of, I think, anybody that realized at the time, there were a number of delays. The biggest one was Columbia Gas delayed their start process by four months, which obviously means we're still that far behind. Moving towards 2022, the power lines were worked on. Obviously, we've seen some issues with Memorial Plaza, where some of that work is done for the curb work as well as the sidewalk. And now you're starting to see additional work continuing on the south side. So the issues that we're facing right now specifically start with the power lines. We're currently waiting on AEP to schedule to remove those power lines, so most of those lines will be put into the ground. And then at that point in time, a majority of the work at the intersection itself will move to other locations, primarily on the south side between Jackson and Lancaster. So that's the thing that we are waiting on right now on as far as AEP schedule. We are continuously being told that everything is coming within two weeks. As soon as we know a confirmed date, we'll let you know as far as when that gets done. As far as some of the concerns when it comes to businesses, the Memorial Plaza parking lot will be open for, basically, starting in the middle of this week. Most of the work has been done as far as the entryways on Lancaster. The entryway was open on Main Street this past weekend to allow for additional parking. The city parking lot has been open the entire time, so basically, coming westbound, you can turn in, or if you're coming eastbound, you can turn and make a left into that particular area. The property owners have also had a conversation. The property owners have also had a conversation starting way back in 2022 on a plan that was ultimately rejected. The city was working with the property owners in the area to assume control of that, to actually pave and control and turn that back section into more of a specific parking lot for all the businesses along the north side of Main Street. Majority of the business owners were in favor of it. There were a few that were not in favor of it for whatever reason, and so that plan was ultimately tabled. That area behind there is actually not the responsibility of the city. This is actually the individual property owners. We have tried very hard to work with them on individual plans to maintain their specific piece of property, but then also trying to work with them to convince them that it's in the greater good of the entire part of that area to work together to come up with a very specific parking plan. You will see coming in at the next meeting, and it did pass for those of you that follow Planning Commission, the Trivium development on the corner of Main and Lancaster is going to address some of those issues. So if you can kind of imagine that you're standing in front of Prost, the right-of-ways are turning into that area as you're headed towards the Helping Hands, the former Helping Hands building. That area is going to be turned over to the city to maintain, and then we'll actually expand some of the parking and paving on the other side around to the Tempe Taco area to help provide additional parking. In addition to the parking that the new Trivium site will develop, which will add approximately 39 additional total parking places, we are also working in some other areas and other alleyways as well to deal with some of those particular things. That being said, those are processes that are going to take some time. Construction hopefully will start later this year, but those parking spaces will not be available until next year. There are a couple of other things that we are working on as well. Again, but now that Memorial Plaza is going to be open, I think that's going to help alleviate some of those parking concerns as well as, you know, extended areas into JFK Park if needed and some other areas behind Prost and Tempe Taco that exist currently. We do have a meeting set every week and a half with the contractor. We do onsite meetings to talk about facilitating ways to improve things. One of the biggest issues that we have seen in the area is the left-turn lanes from Jackson onto Main Street that has caused a number of the issues as far as the delays. So we did toy with the timing of the lights. Unfortunately, that did not necessarily work. The only time that it did work is when Reynoldsburg City Schools was on spring break. Traffic moved a lot easier because of the time period that that was entailed. So school is going to be out in a few weeks, so hopefully that will help. In addition, the conversation has talked about moving some of the barrels at the end of a shift or during the day to move them in a certain way to allow for a little bit free flow of traffic. That is something that we probably will work on, and we're going to focus on that at our next meeting on Wednesday. But the concern is specifically safety. As we've heard already this evening, sometimes people tend to speed through certain areas, and worker safety is paramount. The workers who are there need to be able to understand that they have to do their job without necessarily having to turn their head every 15 seconds to wonder if a car is going to get too close to them. So there is a barrier that goes in with that. That being said, we are working with not only Tempe Taco, Prost, and VIX on some alternatives between now and then, including utilizing the area around the former Moyer Automotive location for additional overflow parking, as well as continuing to work with all the property owners to make sure that everything's signed, sealed, and delivered so we can continue on the sidewalk program. Because once we can get everybody focused in on the sidewalks as opposed to the street work itself, a lot of that construction congestion is going to end. I do want to say that this is just phase one of the process. At our next council meeting, you will see the results of our phase two, the East Main Street Part Two, which is the continuation of the program. So I'd like to say we have learned from some of our issues in the past, so we have been in contact with Columbia Gas a long, long, long time ago to make sure that they understand what our schedule is, and they will be coordinating with the construction worker when selected to make sure that they are there in a timely manner to do that work. So we're not waiting that long for them. That section from Jackson to Wagner will be significantly easier. They will not have as many obstacles at that point in time because, again, at that point, you're looking at the lights, the traffic lights at Jackson, as well as moving on towards the Lancaster intersection are going to be brand-new. They're going to be working and functioning completely, and you'll have a little bit more free flow of traffic. But we are working with our businesses. We are very much strong supporters of our local businesses. As you all know, last two years ago during the COVID pandemic era, we ended up giving over $240,000 to our small businesses, including some of those located on Main Street. But we will continue to work with them to alleviate their concerns. We actually had a meeting with the owner of Tempe Taco today in preparation for a Cinco de Mayo event that is going to happen next Thursday, so you'll see some things that the city is working with Tempe Taco to go ahead and promote that. Shout-out for a plug for them. They're going to have bands out there, some music and some other things, so feel free from 11 to whenever they close. So those are a couple of things specifically with Main Street. Also, wanted to kind of follow up on a couple of other items, starting with the energy aggregation. We all know that volunteer energy is no longer in existence. They are bankrupt, and so we are in the process of setting proposals, hopefully to present to council a number of particular options for a new, I guess you could say, preferred energy aggregate. Director Dorman is very firm in his belief that we should only go with a one-year contract from this point forward, so that way we can guarantee that lowest rate. What we've seen in a trend when we sign contracts longer than one year, what ends up happening is the price by year three is significantly more expensive than some of the other aggregates, so limiting it to one year. For residents who are concerned or who would like to look at those options now, they can go to the utility company websites right now, and they can do their own price comparison shopping if they would like to do that now prior to anything that the city does. But we hope to have something before you by the, hopefully, I would say, the second meeting in May to review and make your recommendations to everything. I also wanted to thank the staff and the volunteers and members of council who are able to participate at our community cleanup day. We don't have all the specific numbers yet. We'll get the tonnage and the number of pills and the number of bikes, but it was very well-attended. I clicked over about 385 cars that came in, and not all of them were usually when they were on their third or fourth trip in. I kind of stopped counting them in at that point, so again, we're looking at a huge number of cars coming in general. But it was very well-received as far as our bulk trash as well as our pill pickup. And as usual, the truck that brought all the bikes in, that was completely stocked full, so we'll get those numbers to you as soon as we get that information. And there's usually kind of a two-week delay in letting us know exactly all the tonnage that we got for paper and everything else like that. I do have other comments, but I'll wait until we get to those things in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our motions. We have a motion to approve a resolution recognizing Child Abuse Month. Councilmember Bryant, will you please read this resolution?
This is a motion to approve a resolution to recognize National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas the city of Reynoldsburg must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of City of Reynoldsburg, we do hereby support National Child Abuse Prevention Month and urge all citizens to recognize child abuse by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Past the 25th day of April 2022.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? May I have a motion to approve this resolution? Councilmember Strickland, is there a second? Councilmember Bryant? Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have reports. Development, Parks, and Recreation Committee, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the Development, Parks, and Recreation Committee meeting for April 25, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cottner, Councilmember Lawson-Roe, Councilmember Peckerel, myself, and you, Madam President. Only item on the agenda is an ordinance approving funds from the unappropriated general fund to various accounts in the Park and Recreation Department. Director Bowman?
Thank you, Chairman Baker, members of the committee. The Parks and Recreation Department has received some sponsorship dollars for the first quarter along with some rental fees for field rental out at Civic Park, and I am requesting that those monies be unappropriated from the general fund and appropriated into the line items as stated in the legislation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from committee? Any from council? Okay, it's in, none. I'll go ahead and make the motion before this on the council for its first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson-Roe. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, always have it. This ordinance will be forwarded on the council for its first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all we have for the committee. Madam President, back to you.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, Councilmember Bryant.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Public Safety Laws and Courts Committee meeting for April 25, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cottner, Councilmember Peckerel, Councilmember Lawson-Roe, myself, and President Jenkins. Have one item on the agenda tonight, which is an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 511 fireworks of the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg. In Attorney Shook's absence, Mayor?
Thank you, Chair Bryant, members of the committee, members of council. As City Attorney Shook brought in our last work session, a discussion point about the policies moving forward now that state law has changed, allowing a different use of those fireworks, including specific days, and broadening it, but leaving a lot of discretion up to the cities themselves. The most recent legislation that we have right now before you should also include a number of the days that are traditionally viewed as fireworks holidays, including Fourth of July as well as New Year's, but then there are a number of additional, as well as Chinese New Year, Cinco de Mayo, Memorial Day Weekend, Juneteenth, Labor Day Weekend, Diwali, as well as some extended time in and around the Fourth of July. In City Attorney Shook's absence, the request was very simple, that if you would like to discuss your philosophy, if there's anything that you would like to see changed or put into the agenda as far as restrictions on timelines or any other suggestions before we move to the next meeting and to the next step. I am to take copious amounts of notes, so I turn it back over to you, Chair.
Yeah, Attorney Shook and I did have some discussion on this matter. The proposed legislation would restrict all fireworks use in Reynoldsburg except for the midnight hour of New Year's Eve and the Third, Fourth, and Fifth Day of July from 7:30 PM till 10:30 PM. So if anybody has comments, discussion points that they want to bring up on that, now is your time.
You said 7:30?
Yes, so it'd be 7:30 to 10:30 on the Third, Fourth, and Fifth of July, and then from midnight to 1 a.m. New Year's Eve, and that would be it.
You probably want to make an amend then, because it says in the legislation 8:30.
That's not what I'm seeing.
That's what I'm seeing.
I'm looking at...
If you could just provide direction, I can make it 7:30, 8:30, whichever. We'll make that adjustment.
Councilmember Peckerel, you look like you have something on your mind.
Yeah, I mean, for me, as little as possible is a good thing. So I think this is a good thing that we are going to two days. But for New Year's Eve, we're talking about, what, midnight?
Yeah.
So I think, I don't know how we can enforce that midnight thing for that one. People might start going early, but I think that's something good. We are reducing the time, at least some kind of control over it.
Yeah, I honestly don't have a problem eliminating New Year's Eve from the list, but I'm certainly open to discussion on this.
So I don't know if this is just a silly technicality, but if we are going to allow it from midnight to 1, that would be New Year's Day, right?
Correct. Yeah, it's actually the drafted use of the ordinance that was sent to me by Attorney Shook says the first day of January from 12 a.m. to 1 a.m., so. And then the Third, Fourth, and Fifth Day from 7:30 PM till 10:30 PM. Any other comments, questions, different points of view? Councilmember Lawson-Roe?
So I have a question for DC in terms of if this is our foundational ordinance, what type of burden does that put on the police department? Because last time when we had this chat, there was rich conversation about what is enforceable and what isn't and how... So I just wonder, how does this burden the police if we say zero tolerance except for the two holidays we mentioned?
Well, I wasn't... Madam President, Mayor, I wasn't here for that conversation. I can tell you that the chief was in favor of limiting the timeframe, and then we would defer to you. It's a violation, I believe, without Mr. Shook here, that we would have to actually witness to be able to enforce. And a lot of times, that doesn't happen with these types of crimes, they do it and then they run. So to say that we would be able to enforce zero tolerance would be difficult, but we'll do whatever council thinks most appropriate. Thank you.
So I'll just speak on that. I think the conversation essentially was, last time with Attorney Shook and Chief Baker, we were essentially looking at comparing the noise ordinances in contrast to any sort of firework violation, being that it's going to be a different standard of probable cause for law enforcement to respond to. The conversation I had with Attorney Shook was essentially that if we put restrictions down to where, you know, you can't just do fireworks whenever you want to, and we're essentially prohibiting the use of fireworks in Reynoldsburg except for these four days in limited time, most people, knowing that fireworks are prohibited in Reynoldsburg, most people are going to comply. And effectively, you know, if we have predominantly law-abiding citizens and residents, you know, they will know that they should not be doing that. It also gives us not just the fireworks ordinance to have a potential violation, you know, charge into mayor's court. More than likely, it's also going to be a violation of the noise ordinance here as well, which is essentially easier to prove, I believe, as what Chief Baker had advised us the last time. Any further discussion? Yes?
I just wanted to rectify. So what I read this afternoon in our agenda was all of the days that were in the state law, so, you know, including Cinco de Mayo and all those, but is that accurate? Because I know you only said New Year's and Fourth of July.
Yeah, so we are putting a restriction down, you know, the state has a certain level of restriction. We are making it more restrictive by not allowing it on, you know, Cinco de Mayo, and I think Labor Day was another one, and...
But I mean, at least the policy in our agenda has those still listed with timeframes. I just want, I don't really care. I'd rather actually take those off, but I just want, is that going to be the final?
As my discussion with Attorney Shook was that it was going to be those three days in July and then the one hour on January 1st.
Ultimately, that's all of your decisions, so I think those are the options. Ultimately, that's all of your decision, so I think those are the options. So, for guidance for the official version of legislation would be, just for clarity's sake, obviously, you can talk directly with City Attorney Shook, or I can, again, take my copious notes.
Yeah, I mean, for the sake of your copious notes, I'm at least for just those three occurrences, the two New Years and the Third, Fourth, and Fifth.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't, I'm not super enthusiastic about the January, New Year's Eve. I don't, I mean, obviously, you know, people are up, but there's a lot of people that aren't, so, you know, I'm open to discussion.
The problem is if it's fireworks or a gun.
Yeah, the famous Facebook post, fireworks or gunshots?
That, the concern, the only concern that I have, and obviously, you know, as the deputy chief mentioned, you know, we'll do whatever council wills in this regard, is just the enforceability aspect of it. That is our concern. You know, we've all kind of hit that topic before, but again, whatever council decides, we'll take care of it.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, that I moved that we forward this ordinance to councils at first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pecorrel. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council as first reading. As there's no further business before the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, I return the meeting to you, President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Service and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Strickland.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for April 25, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson Row, Councilmember Pecorrel, myself, and President Jenkins. Item number one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter to a contract with Stalzer Paving Company for construction services pertaining to installing speed tables on Presley Drive. Mayor.
Thank you Chair Strickland and members of council. So, this is going to take a little bit of a process, I want to kind of go through. This process actually started in the late summer, early fall of 2019, while talking with a number of residents up and down Presley Drive, from Wagner to Quarry Park Drive, about concerns of speeding, and in some cases, I even actually witnessed cars moving at what my non-trained eye seemed as a very accelerated process. Moving forward from that, with the establishment of the Traffic and Transportation Committee, we were able to start to have conversations about the concerns on Presley Drive and other areas throughout the city, and we decided as a committee, that what we should try and work on is to create a policy, kind of a process of, if you have speeding in your area, this is step one, step two, step three, and so on, and so on. So, the conversation moved to that process. The first one is, as one of the letters earlier mentioned, charting the speed that was coming in and out of Presley Drive. And again, the numbers do dictate that the speeding is a little bit different in terms of the perception, you know, and for those of you that have had the opportunity to go to the Citizen Police Academy doing kind of the radar gun thing, standing and looking at a car speeding and actually tracking it with, you know, radar technology, sometimes those numbers don't always match up. Usually, we always think that they're going a little bit faster. However, there were occasions where cars were going, again, in an enforceable level. Enforceable level would be typically, probably more than 10 miles in excess of the speed limit, so 35 miles and beyond in that area. That would be accessible, but again, at the same time, that was with officers present, if they were able to do so. So, the first step that we did outside of that is, we had the one where you can see your speed, and you would see the blinking and all of that, as we tell. Then, we also did another study where it was kind of the, the false one, where you didn't actually see anything in there, it just charted your speed, and the results were relatively consistent between the two. The next step was identifying concerns specifically around Windriff, and that crosswalk is also as Pine Quarry and Presley, people moving through stop signs, as if they were not there. So, the next step in that process was to bring in illuminated stop signs that were bright enough to get your attention, but not too bright, that if you're living in the area, that you're seeing this big red flashing light in your bedroom window all the time. That seemed to help for a while, but not necessarily, the continued impact. A number of other meetings were held, including a town hall meeting that was advertised on September, I'm sorry, on July 29, 2020. Letters for feedback were sent out on, in February 22 of 2021. We ended up getting less than 15 total letters responded back out of the residents that were included, which included everyone on Presley, Windriff, Quarry Park Drive, Sandrock Avenue, Slate Park Avenue, Marble Park, and, yes, Lance, Sandrock Avenue goes around there. And a number of the questions were, again, it was, it was split relatively closely, 50/50, just as many people in favor of speed bumps or speed tables, or some sort of speed modification system, as that were opposed. Following that, I was had the opportunity to attend a homeowners association meeting here at Reynoldsburg Police Department, where members of the homeowners association were present, where they continued to express their concern, and the seeming lack of response from the city over the years to their concerns. This is not a new thing in Presley. You know, they did have those concerns with speeding, they even made options to make it parking on one side of the street only, just to try and allow for some things. There were some concerns where basically, one of three different options came up to solve it. One, round-the-clock enforcement, which is not going to be an option. The other one, which was just as much of a prohibitive thing as closing down Dickens, which is the drive in between Presley and Kingsley that was opened up sometime after this particular establishment was made, again, not necessarily a practical move. The last one that remained was some sort of speed, you know, prohibitive device, whether that was, and again, I try, I will try not to interchange the words, but whether it is a speed bump, which if you ever went to the Livingston campus a couple of years ago, where you had the really big ones, where no matter how fast you're going, it's, you're jumping up and back in the back part of the car. A speed hump, which is a little bit more even keeled, a little bit more than that, or what is being brought to you tonight, which is more of a speed table, which is a little bit wider of a version of things. So, we did that, we talked about even, you know, budding out of the curb a little bit to kind of make it a little bit more condensed or confined in the area. A number of different options were put in there. Ultimately, the Traffic and Transportation Committee listened to the members of the HOA, and they said that this is what they would like to see. So, they would like to see a mapped-out version of what the speed tables would look like. So, in your council packet, you should see an updated map of those locations. The process from there went very simply. The letters went to the residents who would actually have those speed tables in front of their homes, went out to all of those residents. There were originally 10, now there are nine. The only two letters that we got back, or calls that we got back from concern from residents, were two locations, and I don't know, it just happened to be luck, they were actually right, they lived across the street from each other, so it was the same speed table that was actually there. So, only one speed table had to be removed at the time, and that was up to, you know, just recently, until this final engineering had been done. Letters then went out after that on Valentine's Day this year, with the, or I'm sorry, on, on April 5 this year, notifying all residents that would be in the affected area, Presley, Windriff, Quarry Place Drive, Sandrock, and so on, and so on, that tonight, the meeting was going to be held, where the citizens can go ahead and express their views or concerns, either in support of or in opposition against. Basically, what my view on the subject is, there are issues, no matter which way you go. There are concerns with speeding on Presley, because it is a more narrow road than some of the other residential neighborhood roads, so that does tend to, while normally you would think it would confine to make you not want to speed, there are a couple of areas around curves that make you feel to accelerate. There are also concerns when it comes to some of the safety features, and one of the most common complaints is what happens with emergency equipment, things of that nature. So, Chief Sharps from the Turo Township Fire Department and I had a very long conversation about that, to make sure that I got his point of view, and he feels that while it will delay to a point, we're talking very limited amount, depending on what it is. If there's an emergency, Turo Township's going to get there and make sure that they do everything they can to get there. I've also talked with members of the Street Department, there are also concerns about how do you plow these particular roads with speed humps in there, and things of that nature. Typically, the idea is, while snowfall can change and vary from year to year, you're looking at maybe five to eight different occasions throughout the year where snowplows would have to be used, as opposed to the other 350-some-odd days that there would not be snow on the ground. So, therefore, I don't necessarily think that's the most valid of issues, outside of a little bit of additional training to make sure that they know it. Speed tables are, however, a lot easier and identifiable in comparison to speed humps and speed bumps, so that would be something that is there. Either way, I do feel that the residents had their opportunity, or should have their opportunity, to speak and make their comments on this particular issue, and I would like council's decision on this, because ultimately, the one letter writer is right, you know, the speed bumps were actually outside of my home on Kingsley, and I know when I first moved in, probably 17 years ago now, you know, you could see the outline of where they once were. So, obviously, they were there, they were taken away, and now, of course, one of the more common complaints that I have on Kingsley is that there are speeders. But again, this is a process that the residents of Presley Drive and the surrounding area had gone through for a number of times, talking specifically about what can they do? This was not something that was done overnight, this has actually taken, I'm sure, to some residents a lot longer than they wished it would have, but we're looking at a two-year, two-year investigation, a two-year process of that, that will hopefully establish other things. Other roads that typically come up in this conversation is Bryce Road north of Main Street, and then as well as First Gate, though not nearly as much. There's a big drop-off, it's usually Presley, followed by Bryce Road, and then there's a big drop-off before some of the other ones. And again, I'm not including, as some has suggested, speed bumps on Rose Hill and Lancaster, I don't think that that would be an option, but that was suggested. So, with that, I turn it over to council to ask any questions, have any comments, and thank you.
Thank you Mayor, for that update. I do have a question for you. One of the residents wrote in and stated that five of the speed humps had been removed. Do we know how long ago that has happened?
The best that I can gather is the Kingsley ones were the last ones removed, and that happened, I would like to say, 2002, 2003, at the, that's the last time that those, but that's the only one specifically that I know about, just because I could see the barrier mark in the ground after we moved in.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee on this legislation? Yes, Councilmember Pecorrel.
So, thank you. I have personally seen, again, untrained eyes, when I was going around the neighborhood, that the cars were running the much higher speed than what is supposed to be, but again, I don't know that it's actually true, or is my perception of that one, but in the time, maybe we were there for like 25 to 30 minutes, two car overtook, where we were thinking the earlier car was traveling in the posted speed, but that, that was an experience of 25 to 30 minutes of our time there. So, I believe that we, it is helpful to have some kind of speed restrictions, but I really don't know what is the hump bump, or whatever table these things, what are those differences between that one? But my question here is, is there any other thing, other than putting those things to reduce the speed from the people?
In all honesty, outside of, again, the option of 24-hour enforcement, which right now, we don't have the capacity to deal with, the, most of the speeding issues relate to the same thing that a lot of issues that the city faces, it's personal responsibility, it's drivers making sure that they do not accelerate and speed through neighborhoods. It's the same concern that we have when it comes to people littering and throwing things out of their car. You know, officers are great, and they do a great job of, when they do find speeders, to give them tickets, or when people are littering, it's there, they're there for it, but they cannot be everywhere at once, and there are some times when they're not in that particular area. You can put an officer on a motorcycle or in a squad car there, and it'll slow the speeders down for the amount of time that the officers are there on the motorcycle or the police car, and then after that, it's going to pick right back up. Those are part of the issues. You know, I would encourage everyone to understand that this is not just something where we find it's individuals that are of a young age, that have a little bit of a lead foot, this is various ages all the way around, this is issues with people who are distracted driving, this is an issue much greater than all of that. And unfortunately, you know, there is a concern that what happens if, you know, at that wrong moment in time, you know, a kid does go into the street, we've all seen stories like that in a number of communities. That being said, does a speed bump eliminate all of those? No. Does it present other problems? If speed bumps are put on Presley, does that mean that now some of the excess traffic goes and gets diverted to another road? And then, most likely, that will happen, because people realize that. So, I think it's a combination of a lot of things. Some the city has control over, which includes putting in speed tables in this case, other things that we do not have control over, outside of making everybody courteous. If I could make everyone courteous in the city of Reynoldsburg, I would have done so quite some time ago.
Thank you Mayor. Are there any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Sobald?
My first question is just more procedural. Obviously, we're not going to vote on this today, if it gets sent to council, but since it adds emergency language, what timing are we after for this?
So, this would be a two-rate emergency, it was similar to keep in contract with, with the bid process, and having to meet those particular deadlines and things of that nature. So, obviously, this would be the first time where you would have that, and then at this point in time, it would go to our next meeting for final approval, and then in between that point in time, if there are other members of the community that would like to make comments, or if there are any other last-minute adjustments or modifications to it, we can do so in between those two times.
I just wanted to be able to tell people...
It's not happening automatically.
It's not happening, but when is it happening?
I would say, based on last year's process, and when the street program, which will be on your next agenda, will come in play, I would say that you're probably looking at, it could be one of those things where they started off relatively early in the process, which would mean sometime maybe in June-ish, give or take a couple of weeks, or it may be one of the last things that is done at the end of the season, as the rest of the roads are taken care of, and then they would come back and finish this particular one. Once council, you know, ultimately, when council, if and when council approves this particular thing, I will make sure that all residents know exactly when they're coming, when they're going to be put in, and all of that other stuff all the way throughout. I'll continue to make sure we work on that communication, so they won't wake up one day and have people out putting speed tables out there. They'll know they're coming.
And I'll just add very briefly, that I do live off Presley. I don't go down that particular way every day, but I go fairly often down that way, and I will add to the fact that, of it being narrow, it's very windy, and a lot of blindish curves, at least blind in the sense of you don't always see the car coming the other direction, or the kid coming the other direction or whatnot. So, I, plus, I don't really think Presley should be used as a cut-through anyway. So, I actually think of all the places where speed tables are potential, this is probably one of the highest-ranking places where it makes some amount of sense, since it is so narrow, and there's cars parked there, and it's windy, and et cetera, so, my two cents worth.
Thank you Councilmember. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Cotner.
Thank you. Do we have all the data of, of all the roads where the, where the signs put up, the radars put up on Marble Park and Slate Park, I mean, where they put up everywhere, to check the speeding in all of these?
Yeah, we can, if, so I believe if the, the person who wrote the letter earlier, I know he attached the most recent ones, but I can go ahead and gather the rest of that data and get it to you, but it's very consistent all the way throughout. You're going to see, I think the highest rate of speed on Presley Drive is 70, but at one point in time, that was the only one, most of the other ones, again, were within that 25 to 35 mile an hour range.
And again, that's Presley's statistics.
Presley, yeah.
What about Sandrock?
The, those streets were requested for the speed bumps in those areas in anticipation of the additional traffic coming from the MI Development, which will come off of Sandrock.
So, again, we don't have any statistics about speeding in that area, I mean...
That's also part of the homeowners association, which is why they requested that to be included.
Yes, my other thought, there's, I mean, I know we've got more development there, but some of those seem, Presley is, is the main thing we're talking about, but, you know, there's a reason we don't have these stables on every other road in town, and so, kind of putting them into some of these other areas, just wondering again, what, what data we have to support those, the value of those and the need there. I mean, again, I don't ever want to see anybody injured, but I've seen plenty of people also take those speed bumps and speed tables as a challenge as well, and I don't know that that unfortunately will solve any of the problem on, on some of those others. Presley Drive seems like something to be tried, because we've got to do something for, for safety in that area, for sure. It's been there, it's been a problem, it's been a concern for a long time to try to make that area better, but, you know, so again, it seems like a reasonable try to do something there, but I'm still wondering about some of the other areas on top of that. Again, what data and reason we wouldn't want to go that far?
We are happy to alter whichever it is. I believe this is a decision that obviously, you know, needs a lot of thought all the way throughout. Ultimately, when we, at the last meeting, I asked the residents that were there, and there were a good number of 30-plus residents, that were at the last public meeting, I asked them what they would like to see happen if the speed bumps don't solve the problem that they are anticipating, and they really did not have an answer for that, outside of, at least, I don't want to say it in this way, but it's more or less, at least we tried, at least we tried to find a solution to it. So, I am at council's whim on this one, whatever it is that you would like to see, I'm more than happy to. And again, you'll have plenty of time to think about it, if you have more specific questions, but I will definitely get the rest of the data to you. I do know that Quarry Park Drive probably does... I do know that Quarry Park Drive probably does have the data as opposed to some of the other ones, because again, that's straight stretch. But I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilmember Cottner. Are there any other questions?
I would assume, I'm pretty sure of this, but that end of Priestley is not slated to be paved in the next couple of years, right? Because it would be a shame to.
The, the only thing that would get paved in that area is part of the Wagner Road project, which would be at the entryway, where you're having the, ultimately, it will be that little median to help, again, with the speed control and the traffic light. I don't believe it goes through. If you, if you look at that, there's a little loop right as you go, and I can't remember what the name of the street is, but there's a little loop right there. I think that's where that would end. So nothing from that point all the way throughout until you get to the county line is is going to be needed for paving anytime in the near future.
Yeah, I don't think it's in need of paving, but I just thought I'd ask.
In comparison to some of the other roads in town, no.
Thank you. Mayor, do we know how many speed tables we may be looking at?
The most recent diagram has nine listed, three on Priestley, and then the other eight or the other five would be located, various Quarry Park, and then one each on the additional Marble, Slate Park, and Sandrock.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Bryant.
I would, it'd be my suggestion to maybe just start with the speed tables on Priestley and seeing how that goes before investing in other locations. You know, I think speed bumps or humps are not going to be sufficient. You know, I've loved, I've, I've talked to people in Columbus about how their speed tables operate with them. Those seem to be the better alternative to the humps and the bumps, so to speak. And I think, you know, with with Priestley being a cut-through for a lot of people, the folks that live out there have, they've been, yeah, they've had the time out there. I've, I've been out there and talked to some of the folks on Priestley myself, and I've seen a number of cars traveling what I considered way too fast. And again, it could be perception, but, you know, for most folks, perception's reality.
Thank you, Councilmember Bryant. Yes, Mayor?
Even though the diagram does say humps, they are speed tables. They, it's, there's a lot of times where we get very confused on, again, the terminology, humps, bumps, and tables. It just, they all start to run together after a while. But I just want to clarify that what would be going into this area are speed tables.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, yeah, Councilmember Baker.
I'm just going to be quick because I know we've related on this a while, but I just want to say thank you for trying to do something, because I was with Councilmember Pecorale when that car zoomed right past the other car that was actually going the speed limit. My jaw dropped because it just blatantly did it. So that means he must have done that before. That wasn't the first time, but at least trying to do something to curb, curb this, I applaud. I mean, my suggestion was to raise the speeding ticket fine, but this way it worked too.
We did look into that, but apparently, there's a higher revised code that prohibits me from doing that. We did, we did look at raising fines to an excess amount. We even looked at lowering the speed limit from 25 to 15 in hopes that that would maybe garner a little bit more of the heavy fine. I would like to say there was no stone unturned. I mean, we really did dig down as best as we could into this.
Thank you, Mayor. I like the suggestion of just doing Priestley right now versus the other street. I think that would allow us to gather more information to determine, you know, if those other streets become a problem, I guess, because we already know Priestley is an issue right now. Okay, any other questions? All right. I move before this ordinance to council for a first-read emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance would be forwarded to council for a first reading. As there is no further business for the Public Service and Transportation Committee, I return this meeting back to you, President Jenkins.
Thank you. There is no Finance and Administration Committee meeting this evening. Next, we have consent agenda for emergency adoption. Items 12, 1, and 2 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for emergency adoption unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with an emergency approval. Would the clerk please read items 12, 1, and 2?
One, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMH&amp;T for program verification and schematic design for the Bryce Park development and appropriating funds therefore, declaring an emergency. An ordinance to amend Chapter 160, Section 160.02A, authorized positions, personnel, classification, and pay grade, A, administration, Section G.I., Service Department, Section 160.02G4, Street Division, for the City of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances? Councilmember Baker, is there a second? Councilmember Bryant, thank you. Would the clerk please call the row?
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorale?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Councilmember Cottner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Madam President, that was 7-0.
These ordinances are approved, seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Next, we have a consent agenda for a first reading. Items 13, 1 through 3 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward for a first reading. Would the clerk please read items 13, 1 through 3?
One, an ordinance appropriating funds from the Unappropriated General Fund to various accounts in the Parks and Recreation Department. Two, an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 511 fireworks of the codified ordinances of the City of Reynoldsburg. Three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Strauss or Paving Company for Construction Services pertaining to installing speed tables on Priestley Drive, appropriating funds, and declaring an emergency.
These ordinances stand for a first reading. Next, we have a consent agenda for a second reading. Items 14, 1 through 5 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a second reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a second reading. Would the clerk please read items 14, 1 through 5?
Item 1, an ordinance authorizing the clerk of council to certify nuisance cost 2021 for collection by the Franklin County Auditor. Item 2, an ordinance authorizing the clerk of council to certify nuisance cost 2021 for the collection by Licking County Auditor. Three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept public infrastructure associated with the Laurel Bluff Development Project. Four, an ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service to implement an annual sidewalks inspection, repair, and maintenance program 2022. Five, an ordinance to certify special assessments for sidewalk repairs and replacement costs incurred by the City of Reynoldsburg in 2021.
These ordinances stand for a second reading. Next, we have a consent agenda for a third reading. Items 15, 1 through 3 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a third reading and approval unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a vote on these ordinances. Would the clerk please read items 15, 1 through 3?
Item 1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 Planning and Zoning Code for the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. Item 2, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with modern office methods for the copiers for the police department and waive competitive bidding. Item 3, an ordinance to approve the final plat plan for the Eastwood Development.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances? Councilmember Strickland, may I have a second? Councilmember Bryan, would the clerk please call the row?
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorale?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Councilmember Cottner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Madam President, that's 7-0.
These ordinances are approved with seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Next, we have other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items that you would like to discuss this evening? Yes, Councilwoman Mayor, Lawson Row?
Is this the appropriate time to share? No. I think I'm at the wrong spot. My apologies.
Does anyone have any other council matters that you would like to discuss this evening?
I'll just go. Madam President, I know we're towards the end, but the people of my tradition want to thank law enforcement, our men and women in service, our doctors, our nurses, and definitely our teachers, as we still get through this pandemic, because they're still working hard to make sure that our lives are still going as smooth.
Thank you. Did you have something that you wanted to share, Councilwoman Lawson Row?
I'll try this again, thank you. This Saturday, Saturday, April 30, I believe, there will be an open casting call for Reynoldsburg Juneteenth Branches of Excellence Talent and Fashion Show. It is an open casting call for ages 5 through 18, no experience needed or necessary, this Saturday, April 30, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Reynoldsburg Community Center, YMCA. We are doing something different this year with Juneteenth, and we are highlighting the youth in our community. So if anyone is interested in participating as a fashion designer or model or offer a talent, we welcome you to come, sign up for the open casting call, which is Saturday, April 30, from 2:00 to 4:00. And the show date is Friday, June 17, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And if there are any questions regarding further details, Angela Abram is our contact. Thank you.
Thank you. Our upcoming meetings, there's a scheduled council meeting, BZBA, and planning commission meetings. The next scheduled council meeting is May 9, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. And if there's no other further business, this meeting is adjourned, and the time is now 7:49. Thank you.
Hey, Buwan, can you come here? Because I don't feel like walking all the way over there. I'm sorry, limping all the way over there.